I'd like to have your attention. We'll call the February 1st, 2011 meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. At this point, I'll ask Commissioner Renee Griffith to give our invocation, please.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to serve the citizens of Iredell County. Lord, we pray that you give us wisdom and direction and guidance as we make decisions and that we are wise and good stewards of the things that you have given us. We ask you to watch over our servicemen and women and protect them and be with their families. Thank you for the people that serve in this county, and thank you for your blessings on Iredell County. We ask all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Do you want to send a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mashburn, are there any adjustments to the agenda from the staff?
Mr. Chairman, we have no adjustments to the agenda this evening.
All right. Are there any adjustments from any members of the board or additions? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion for adoption of this agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve from Mr. Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have no presentation of special recognitions and awards that I'm aware of, and no appointments for the board, and no public hearings, so we'll move immediately to the administrative matters. Mr. Mashburn, if you could take over here, please, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the first item under the administrative matters is a request to call for a public hearing regarding road improvements to SR 1311 or the Rankin Hill Road. Robbie Carney with the Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development Corporation will make that presentation, who is now the executive director for the Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development Corporation interim.
Congratulations, Mr. Carney.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate it.
Look forward to working with you.
As do I. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners of Iredell County, I appreciate you all seeing me here tonight. Iredell County has recently been named the future location of America's Dream Park. It's a national little league baseball complex in the southern part of the county. The positive impacts of the park will be numerous. Projected impacts include 80,000 visitors per year, generating $33 million in direct spending, and creating over 500 part-time jobs for both our youth and our senior citizens. However, because of the size and the nature of this project, there will also be issues with our local infrastructure. Rankin Hill Road, where the park is to be located, is an unpaved gravel road that provides valuable connection between Cornelius Road to the south and Fern Hill Road to the north. NC DOT is considering contributing to the paving of this road, however, it is not listed as a priority of the county. It was suggested by NC DOT that the Board of Commissioners, if they feel the need or they feel the road indeed should be made a priority to Iredell County, that they pass a resolution that Rankin Hill Road be included as an Iredell County priority. By doing this, the paving of the road can be considered for inclusion in the local secondary roads paving program by the NC DOT. With that, at the suggestion of the NC DOT and on behalf of the Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development Corporation, we would like to request a public hearing on February 15th for road improvements for State Road 1311, Rankin Hill Road. Now, if there are any questions in regards to this matter, I'd be happy to take them at this time.
Mr. Carney, my understanding is even though we've taken action on this, the DOT is following a policy now where they would like for us to hold a public hearing, and that's why you're back. Is that right?
Yes, sir. That is correct. The DOT has recently passed some transparency statutes. They want to make sure that we have all these things out and open to the public, so that they've requested that we do bring that before as a public hearing to give them the opportunity to speak.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other questions, Mr. Carney? If not, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we call for a public hearing on February 15th, 2011, at 7:00, regarding the road improvements for SR 1311, Rankin Hill Road.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Carney.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is a request to approve a budget amendment, and the purpose of this is to purchase some hardware or software that will provide some additional security to county facilities and buildings and offices. Tracy Jackson, the deputy county manager, will make that presentation.
Good evening. Just to remind you of an incident that happened several months ago, and this is one of the reasons we're requesting this particular software. There was a workplace violence incident at the planning department last summer. In the process of reviewing that incident and what may have been able to have been done differently, we've looked at our plans, our policies, procedures. And first of all, I've got to say the staff there reacted admirably. They did a great job in terms of what they did in a moment's notice to protect themselves and their coworkers. But in hindsight, there are some things we can do, not only to protect that department, but also to better protect our other departments. One of those things that we looked at and have made changes to in that particular building is some physical security changes, and also some changes in policies, plans, and training for the staff. One other element that can help us across the county that we've found out about, and we'd like to give you a little demo on tonight, is called ePanic software. And what this would do is allow us to, through the computer at each employee's workstation in a particular department, and it doesn't necessarily mean that every single employee has to have this on their computer. The department head can determine, based on the layout of their building and the functions of the different employees, who should have it, who shouldn't, who's going to benefit from it the most. Basically, if you'll notice here on the screen, there would be an icon in this area, and I'll show you a demonstration here in just a minute, basically a video from the company that explains the software and how it works in a little more detail. But there'd be a series of icons here on the lower right-hand corner of the screen that the employee could alert in a crisis situation in order to request help or to notify others that a critical situation is occurring in the building. It could be something simple as just needing the help of a supervisor with an irate citizen that has a complaint, or it could be something extremely critical, such as a workplace violence incident where that employee needs to discreetly let everybody else know what's going on so a plan can be put into action based on that alert. So if you will, just give me a second here.
Will this be, this to go to Department of Social Services, Health Department, as well as like tax collector?
We did. We surveyed everyone across the board, and some departments, a very small number of departments, would not need it. Sheriff's Office, for example.
[laughing]
Yeah, I mean, some obvious...
They need it, we're in a world of...
Some obvious ones. But the majority did respond positively that they would like to have this capability, if possible. Of course, basically, plans of us and them, we demonstrated this the other day, and it worked like a flash.
Well, if you're not going to get the video portion of that, you can at least show the icons and so forth and how that would work, and we'll go from there.
It looks like it's trying to load. We'll see what happens with that. Here in the middle of the screen, you'll see that there's, in this particular setup, three different ways to send an alert. They have them color-coded based on the priority. And we can set that up so that it can go to certain parties within the department and outside the department. If we'd like, we can have it go to a 911 center, for example, to alert the 911 center if it's a critical type of incident. It can also go to cell phones and send a text message. So you can notify supervisors, department heads, whether they're in the department or not in the department, so they're aware of what's going on. You can also have it set up to where it sends to other devices in the building, so coworkers will be aware of what's happening and know what appropriate action to take. There's also, as you'll see here in the lower part of the screen, different ways to activate it. You could do it with a mouse click, you could do it with a keyboard, a hot button on the keyboard, or a optional foot pedal, which would just be on the floor, underneath the desk, and there's no hand movements or anything, so it's even more discreet. In terms of the cost of this system, this is a North Carolina-based company. We have looked around. There weren't really any other companies that offer these types of features in this type of field. And the cost in general, $10,000, one-time fee for that, and a $1,000 maintenance agreement that would be renewed annually. And of course, under that, we get technical support, various types of upgrades, and some online webinar security training. Mr. Lumenstein has put together a budget amendment for us. We're proposing that this come from contingency. There was $250,000 there, or there is currently. If you approve this, it would drop, of course, to 240, and it would cover the cost of the purchase for the software.
Have you seen this actually operate? As opposed to...
In the demo?
I hate for somebody to be wailing on me with a baseball bat while...
Yeah, this isn't reflective of the company at all. This is some type of glitch we have on our podium right here, and we had glitches prior, but it was worked out the other day, and, you know, technical glitches do occur. We have, our IT department has spoken to another county in North Carolina similar in size to us that has this. They are pleased with the service. We have seen it in operation in terms of online and the video. So it is pretty much point-and-click, active off-the...
Phone call said...
In terms of it being compatible, it's just a phone call, is what happens, and it's placed to the IP system and the computer system, out to them. Same thing with text messages and emails, so it's instantaneous.
Any other questions? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve this request, and we approve, there's a budget amendment signed, this is budget amendment number 25. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is a request from the Code Enforcement Special Projects Department to apply for some funds that are available to the county through the energy stimulus grant from the North Carolina Department of Energy. Lynn Niblock will make that presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here tonight to make the board aware of an opportunity that we have to apply for an energy grant, as Mr. Mashburn said, through the North Carolina Department of Energy. This is a continuation of a competitive grant that they offered last year, and we did apply for it last year, but we were not chosen as a recipient. They haven't opened it up for a second round. There are no matching funds required for this grant. The amount of the grant can vary from $100,000 minimum to $500,000 maximum. If we are successful in obtaining the grant, we would propose to use the funds for upgrading our HVAC equipment and weatherization of county buildings. The specific action requested for your approval would be to allow us to proceed with application for this grant, and I'll be glad to address any questions the board might have.
How old are the air conditioning units you would like to replace?
I'm sorry, excuse me.
How old are the air conditioning units you want to replace?
They vary in age. We're actually in the process of doing energy audits on our facilities right now. We have, our staff has visited most, if not all, of the facilities, and we're in the process of putting that information together to determine which are the oldest units, which buildings are the least energy efficiency and energy efficiency, and to try to determine which are the most logical units to replace.
And this grant is from the stimulus package that was passed by President Obama two years ago?
Yes, ma'am. It's part of the American ARA stimulus grant. This funding happens to come through the State Department of Energy. As I think the board is aware, we did get some direct funding on the stimulus grant, and we intend to use some of that funding for this same purpose. If we were successful in obtaining this as well, we would just be able to expand that to replace more units and address more buildings.
This is simple an application at this time, there's no guarantee, isn't that right?
No, it is a competitive grant throughout the state of North Carolina, so we would have to apply, and it would go through the process that they use to determine the recipients, and we may get it, we may not. As I said, the board approved us applying for that last year, but unfortunately, we were not chosen in that round of applications. Hopefully, we may be this time, but there is no guarantee that we'll be successful.
Mr. Niblock, this is fairly similar to some of the other grant slash project work that we've basically used a lot of our skilled labor that, several years ago, they were inspecting buildings and stuff, and now because of the construction slowdown, they, quite frankly, if we didn't have them employed doing these types of projects, they would have nothing to do, and probably we would have to, their positions would be in jeopardy to be eliminated. So, but we've been doing these kind of projects for, what, six to nine months or so?
It's probably been nine months since we got the initial funding.
Have we seen...
We've probably actually been working on them for probably a little over six months now.
Okay. And county funds weren't used to pay for a lot of these energy-efficient projects. They came from other sources. I'm just kind of curious, did we know, have we noticed so far any reduction in our utility bills?
Well, again, we are compiling that information as we speak. We have, in just looking at some of the numbers, but not doing an in-depth analysis on it, there does appear to be some reduction in some of the buildings on some of the utility bills. We really don't have a lot of background information since we're still finishing up the last portion of the lighting upgrade, so it's going to take a while before we can get you a good number that I'm comfortable with. But if you look at the, the Department of Energy has a calculator program that you can plug in, how many light fixtures you've upgraded and this type of stuff, and if that calculator is anywhere near accurate, what we have done on the lighting upgrade should result in somewhere around a $35,000 reduction in the energy cost across the board.
Per year?
Across the board, for all the buildings that we have addressed, per year, an annual segment. So now, once we get enough data to actually crunch the numbers, we'll see how accurate their calculator is, but...
You know, I, like I said, county funds may not be used, but state and federal are, and I pay state taxes, I pay federal taxes. I'm just kind of curious, is what sort of payback the taxpayers are getting on that sort of, I'll use the word investment because they do, but...
Right.
It's a, it, you know. Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? Request is for permission to apply for this grant.
Motion to approve the request.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries 4-1.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the North Carolina statutes requires the tax collector to report to the governing bodies on February the total amount of unpaid taxes, so tonight we have our tax collector and newly-appointed tax administrator to make that presentation, Gil Furtis.
Good evening. Earlier this evening, I gave Aretha the report of unpaid taxes that are liens on real property. It totals slightly over $10 million, but that's all jurisdictions, not just Iredell County. And once you receive this report, you're required to set a date for advertising. In this case, I'm asking for that the tax liens be advertised on March 16, 2011.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Furtis?
Were you advertising both the Statesville and the Mooresville papers?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Yeah, I was gonna, um...
Yes, I'm sorry.
There's a, there's a new, there's a paper called the Mooresville Weekly that's actually, is a free newspaper that has a pretty wide subscription. I mean, because it's, because they deliver it for free, it's probably got a larger number of people that it can reach. I'm not directing you to do it, but I'm, you might want to, instead of just doing the Statesville Record and Landmark and the Tribune alone, you might want to look just to see what it would be.
The reason we have done the Tribune and the Statesville paper together is they have the largest circulation of anyone in the county, including the Charlotte Observer. We tried to, and the purpose of, and we did use the Lake Norman newspaper at one time in the past when we could throw that into the deal. The purpose is notification, and notify the people and get it to the greatest number of people, but I suspect that they will want me to pay for them to produce. It's a pretty sizable pamphlet we put together, so about 40 pages. But I certainly will take a look at that.
Just consider it, that's all.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The request is to designate March 16, 2011 as advertising date.
Yes, sir.
So moved. Motion from Mr. Mitchell for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Furtis.
Mr. Chairman, the next several items actually coming from the sheriff's office, so I'll not introduce each of those. Marty can do that.
Okay. Good evening. The first item is a request to, for budget, approved budget amendment number 26, which is to recognize the second year of the grant, the gang initiative grant, which is actually part of the SIGI, Statesville-Iredell Gang Initiative. This grant, the total grant for this year will be 46,787 with a $5,848 match, which we've already designated from our seized funds to do that. We anticipated this whenever we applied and accepted the grant first year. This will be the last year of that grant.
Okay. Any questions?
This is a grant that you've already received, like prior year.
Yes.
Captain Phillips, just out of curiosity, how was, how was that money spent? What kind of things did y'all do with it? And do you feel like you got, that it was worth it?
Our part of it is to pay the salary of our gang liaison officer, of our gang investigator. However, there are numerous partners in this grant, including some athletic groups, some faith-based groups, appropriate punishments part of it. So they have a piece of each of the program, and they use their funding for their, probably typically, most of it is for salary and some operational, some equipment expense.
Did we convert any gang members?
We've identified quite a bit of gang members. Our gang liaison actually works most of his time in the jail, and that's what he does. In order for us to be able to identify a gang member, there are certain criteria they have to meet, and that's what his main job is, to find that criteria so that we can designate them as a gang member and put them in a gang database.
Okay, so it has, so this isn't, this isn't a program where y'all are trying to convince them to have some hobby or something as opposed to being in the gang? This is mainly of how to identify and track gang activity?
And the enforcement part of it.
Okay, cool. Cool.
All right.
All right.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making the motion that we approve budget amendment 26 to accept the grant funding from the North Carolina Governor's Crime Commission and take part in the gang initiative.
Okay. Motion for approval from Mr. Robertson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is approval to, for budget amendment number 27. The agenda states it's a traffic equipment grant from the Governor's Highway Safety Program. This is for, it's actually running in conjunction with our traffic project grant. This is to purchase equipment. The grant is for $19,050. There is no match. The equipment we'll buy are like a generator, light tower, cones, vests, a trailer, equipment that we would use at a traffic checkpoint, is basically what it'd be.
I hate to sound redundant, but this is already a grant that you've already been approved for and applied for.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. No further questions. Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve budget amendment number 27 to appropriate funding for the traffic equipment grant.
Okay. Motion for approval comes from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is approval of budget amendment number 28 to appropriate commissary funds for the purchase of a new automated fingerprint identification system, or AFIS system. The reason we're wanting this is that, starting today, a new law was passed where for certain misdemeanors and felonies, DNA has to be taken, a sample of DNA has to be taken and put into a database. And what we're finding with the jail population that we're dealing with right now is that every felony person that's arrested now, and some of the misdemeanors, will also have to go into booking area for that to happen. What we're trying to do is we're wanting to put another AFIS system into the magistrate's arrest area. That way, that person can already, we can run their fingerprints out there, then we'll know if there's a DNA sample already on record. If not, they can be released there if they're released on bond, instead of having to take them back into the back of the jail. It will also relieve the amount of work that's being used on that machine in the booking area.
And this will be paid for from the profits resulting from commissary funds?
They'll pay for it themselves.
I can't think of a better group of people we've got to pay for this. Okay. Any further questions? If not, open for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve this.
Mr. Griffin offers a motion for approval. Any discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And the last item is authorization to sell 10 used tactical vests to Wilkes County Sheriff's Office. These are vests that are no longer being used by our tactical unit, and Wilkes County has a need for those, and we would sell them, those vests, to use for their tactical squad.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
There's a request now for approval to submit a grant to the Homeland Security for funding. of a fire extinguisher training trailer, and Fire Marshal's Office, Ronnie Thompson Fire Marshal, will make that presentation.
Okay, we're asking to be able to apply for a Homeland Security grant for a trailer that would be able to use for fire extinguisher training. Also with that trailer, there is a section of it that we can use for demonstration of sprinkler systems. Ms. Odom has done all the research as far as the grant and things like that, so I'll let her explain what she's come up with.
This is a grant that we will present to the Department of Homeland Security for fire extinguisher training that also will allow us to use in our plans review program, the sprinkler system. There will be no expense to the county. We do not have to match funds after I did research with the grants management team. There will be no matching funds required since we are an investigating agency. The minimum, I mean, the maintenance upkeep on it is very minimal. The required maintenance would be simply to inspect the roofing of the unit annually, and if we have to reseal it, it's approximately a hundred dollars. The other cost, gas to tow it may increase for about six hundred dollars, and the propane that would be used in the tanks, we would balance out by not having to buy diesel fuel that we currently use.
I've got a couple of questions.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Robertson.
First of all, I just wanna tell you, you did exactly what a, a good county department does, which is if there's grant funds out there, go find them and, and use them for the benefit of the county. So, so the, the fact that I'm questioning this, I don't want y'all to take, take it, is that we don't want you doing that. I mean, we just approved numerous different other grants. But when I, when I read this, um, I, I've got a couple of concerns that have nothing to do with our Fire Marshal's Office. And, and the first one is, as a, as a federal taxpayer, I mean, I remember the Department of Homeland Security kinda came about to, uh, 'cause of nine eleven. You know, we're supposed to protect the nation from having Islamic extremists try to blow us up, and, and now we're gonna use nineteen thousand dollars of that money for fire extinguisher training. Beam me up, Scotty, there's, I, I, I just, I, for the life of me, I can't figure out how in the world it, it's evolved into this. And, and so, and, and, and somewhere in here, I, I feel like I'm, I'm contributing to it if I, if I support this. I mean, I, some of these other grants, you know, if, if an energy department gives a grant to, to do energy conservation measures, then that's kinda functionally aligned, and I can see some benefit even though, even though we've not realized a, a benefit on the energy side yet, or if the Sheriff's Department gets a, a grant to, to help find gang members, I can see where there, where there's a benefit to doing that. But for the life of me, I, I'm having a, a real struggle trying to figure out how on earth our Homeland Security has gotten into the business of fire extinguisher training trailers. And, uh, and even though it may be no cost to the county, I'm a, I'm still a, I'm a federal taxpayer, and I know that if we don't use this money, they'll just turn around and give it to somebody else, but, you know, I'm ki- kinda reminded of when the, when the allied armies landed on the beaches of Normandy. Every, everything was all confused and people were in different places, and there wasn't clear leadership, but little by little, bands of five men stood up and they did the right thing, and, and eventually they, 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 they took the beaches 'cause they knew, they knew the job they had to do. And, and I gotta tell you, even though it may be convenient to haul around a trailer instead of a couple of big tubs to light some rags and diesel fuel to demonstrate a fire extinguisher, and yeah, it may not cost, cost the county any money, I just gotta tell you, as a, as a federal taxpayer, I, I would be unhappy if I knew somebody was spending the money like this. And even though it may not come out of the county budget, I've got some real problems support, supporting the grant. Again, y'all did what you're supposed to do, which is try to get as much as you can, not on the county taxpayer's nickel, but.
Just on a.
I don't take it personally, but.
Yeah.
My understanding is that this grant is a part of FEMA's public education campaign, and what it was designed to do was to address the community's risk in order to promote the reduction of fire and other safety hazards. So that's how it's explained in the, the paperwork.
Okay, good. FEMA, Federal Emergency Management, I.
If I can just interject, it's a common, common misconception right now, especially after nine eleven and over the years, what's happened with Homeland Security is a lot of those other disaster-related, response-related, planning-related agencies, including some of the fire service at the federal level, have kinda been rolled up into Homeland Security. So it's, it's not unusual to kinda hear those concerns when we have grants come through for Homeland Security. And this is just kind of a division of Homeland Security, and apologize if that was not made clear.
Well, this might, and program will actually be used to teach people how to use a fire extinguisher, right?
Correct.
How to actually put out a fire and do it the correct way. Because we know there's more than one way of doing it, and some people say, well, as long as they get it done, well, do you, there's so many people, and you can tell me the number probably, but there's so many people that do not how to use, do not know how to use a fire extinguisher. And that's really important to this county and schools and everywhere else.
Just on a practical side, how many requests has the Fire Marshal's Department had to come out and show people how to use a fire extinguisher? Do we know that information?
We do have, in our fire education program, we do offer fire extinguisher training to different corporations such as Pilchhattery, Land of Lakes, Lowe's. We go out there several times a month and do fire extinguisher training. We do plan to, if we are granted this money, we do plan to expand our fire education program to be able to teach the sixteen hundred children that we teach on a monthly basis in the public and private schools how to use a fire extinguisher. Also in the plans review programs that's required through the inspections Department, the, the unit also has a.
I saw the picture, like a hood.
They also have another part that can be used in plans review. This will be open to the general public just as an educational program.
How often would you anticipate using this trailer? Once, twice a week? Once, twice a month?
I would say at least two to three times a week. We do have fire education every day in the school systems, and we usually go out once or twice, right now, to different industries to do fire extinguisher training. So it would be put to good use.
And any idea of the life expectancy of this thing?
The life expectancy of the trailer is approximately twenty years.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we don't get in the situation where it's set there, and then one day we pay somebody fifty dollars to pack the wheel bearings, and we buy two hundred dollars worth of tires, and we take it down to the fairgrounds and sell it for fifty bucks, as long as we're gonna use it.
I think it would be put to good use.
Okay.
How are you doing the training now?
We're doing it in a burn pan with diesel. And they just go out and they set the fire and put it out, but then you have to wait on this larger metal pan to cool before you can move it, and it smells. It's not really that safe, but it's the way fire departments have always done things.
But now you'll be burning with propane?
It'll be burning with propane. It has two propane types on it, and it will be extinguished with a water mist.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Make a motion that we go ahead with the plan of binding fire.
Mr. Norman, I support that motion. Would you include in it contingent upon if we get the grant that there be no county money expended?
Sure.
Okay.
With the understanding that the grant's approved.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just want a clarification on that. No, no county money to match the grant, but there will be monies to operate it.
Yeah.
Okay.
As far as the procurement of the trailer, no county money.
Okay.
Okay? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Well, let's see, my hands, who voted yes? Okay. Motion carries three two. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the administrative matters.
Item J.
Well, you do have the minutes, I apologize for that.
We have a request for the approval of the minutes of January eighteenth, two thousand and eleven.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions, the Board of Health. We have one announcement.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Since this is my announcement, the Board of Health does have a vacancy, and we have a volunteer that's ready to go to work. I understand they've already been working with him, so I would move that we suspend the rules for the announcement and just go ahead and vote on the appointment of Mr. Jerry Turner.
Okay.
To fill BK Behringer's public-appointed position on the board.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Mitchell to suspend the rules and appoint Mr. Turner by acclamation. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
If I could, before we leave that subject.
Yes, sir.
BK Behringer, I served on the Board of Health as well. BK Behringer was a professional engineer, a, a, a busy man, but he had a wealth of knowledge about, about engineering and civil engineering, environmental engineering issues. It had to do with, with public health and, and sanitation, waste treatment, waste disposal, all that kinda. And, 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 and these positions are unpaid, and, and I just wanna, wanna express, I, I doubt Mr. Behringer's reading, is, uh, sitting home watching, watching us on television, but for, for anybody who's, who's listening, he is the, the perfect example of, of someone who volunteers their time, and, and this county reaps huge benefits from having skilled, intelligent people serve on some of these boards and commissions. Some of the advice and the guidance and, and the, the, the technical expertise that he provided to the Board of Health has just been phenomenal over the years, and, and this county benefited greatly from, from, from his sense of public service. So BK, if you're out there, thanks, buddy.
BK is building a home on the Pacific Ocean in Mexico.
Yep, I know, I know.
He doesn't have time to come to the meeting, but you're absolutely right. I've been knowing BK for twenty-some years now, and there's nothing that he doesn't know about septic systems and soil.
Absolutely.
Okay. We'll move to appointments to boards and commissions. The Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, we have three appointments. The term for Jean Inyard. Evie Colwell and Linda Harmon expire in February. Ms. Harmon is agreeable to another turn. And I saw Becky Leonard has applied. So the floor is open for nominations.
I make a motion that we nominate Becky Leonard to serve on that committee.
Okay. Which one?
Becky Leonard.
All right.
And I'll also make a motion that we reappoint Linda Harmon.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I would move that we appoint these two ladies by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have the Nursing Home Advisory Committee. We have two appointments. The term for Brenda Rumpel and Alan Singerman expire in February. Ms. Rumpel is agreeable to another turn.
Nominate Brenda Rumpel?
Vice Chairman Norman nominates Brenda Rumpel. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Ms. Rumpel by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have the Central Illinois Economic Development Commission, one private sector appointment. Floor is open for nominations. If there are no nominations, I move we table this to our next meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, we're back again, folks, to the Board of Equalization and Review, and I think we've got all our members in place, and we need a chairman and a vice chairman. Floor is open for nominations. Well, we're paying attention, weren't we?
We're waiting on you.
Yeah.
Waiting on the chair.
I have a question. Are all these men agreeable to serve as the chairman or vice chairman?
Well, I can't say to all of them.
Does it be terrible to appoint someone who didn't want to carry that responsibility?
I'm gonna go ahead and, I, I feel a little easy-talking people and personalities, but due to the fact that it is an evaluation year, and I do, I know that everybody has concerns from time to time how meetings are conducted or so forth, and, and the manner in which they're done, but I, I really feel strongly as chairman of the, you know, our board this time, we really need somebody with experience in that chair. And, uh, having, having said that, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and nominate Mr. Bill Thunberg for the chair. Are there any other nominations for chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate someone for vice chairman, if you wanna do it as one vote or you wanna.
Okay, we can do that.
I'd like to nominate Hal Jolly as vice chairman.
Hal Jolly as vice chairman. Okay. And I think we can, if there's no other nominations, then I would offer motion we close the floor to nominations and appoint these two by acclamation, those being Bill Thunberg chairman and Hal Jolly vice chairman. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And what do we have next? Any unfinished business to come to our attention? Any new business?
Mr. Chairman, don't we have an appointment for the historic, uh.
Uh, yeah, you may be right.
Commissions? I have a volunteer for that. You wanna bring it up?
I saw that, and now I've lost it.
On next, on the last one.
Yeah.
I have, this is to fill the slot for Mrs. Teresa Turner, who passed away.
Right.
Not too long ago, and her son has said that he would like to serve, finish her. I think it's two years she's got left on that, so I'd like to nominate Mr. Raymond Turner.
Okay. Mr. Raymond Turner has been nominated. Any other nominations? If not, I move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Mr. Turner by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. I believe I got down to new businesses. Any new business come to our attention? Hearing none, county managers report.
Mr. Chairman, we're gonna make a, another attempt to make a presentation tonight, but we didn't have much luck with the first one, so hopefully we'll have better luck. But we've been working with a company to do a project that is a showcase project, a showcase video project about Aridale County. This was, this is available on our website. It was made available to the county at no cost to the county, but was funded. It was made available to the county at no cost to the county, but was funded by the company that prepared this, selling advertisements or advertisements to local businesses that are a part of this, and we're going to try to watch that now, and hopefully it will come through. We didn't have much luck with the other one. Let's save this one.
Yeah, this one should be a little bit different. It's embedded on our website, so we'll keep our fingers crossed. I'm just going to go through a couple of these videos, so you'll have an idea of the work that went into it. Some of these shots were done here, in terms of the video, in Iredell County. I had a videographer from the company that came to the county, and we ran around, and she got different scenic views and different attractions on video. And then some of it is canned, and you may or may not be able to tell. It'll be interesting to see.
You click the button, I hope the SWAT can go and show up.
Hello and welcome to Iredell County, North Carolina. It's our pleasure to invite you on this virtual tour of our area, to see just why it is that so many people choose to call Iredell County "home." Centrally located in North Carolina, residents have access to major hubs such as Charlotte and Raleigh via Interstates forty and seventy-seven. For air travel, the Charlotte Douglas International Airport is an hour away. However, with natural beauty and plenty to do, there's no reason to leave. From its lowest point at the Cotaba River to the highest peaks of the Brushy Mountains, Iredell County offers a variety of communities, including the rural countryside in the north, the suburban towns in the south, and the county seat of Statesville in the middle of it all. While the region retains a rural flavor, Iredell County continues to grow, positioning itself as the crossroads for the future. Come experience all that makes Iredell County a key ingredient of the new south. Iredell County prides itself on being able to offer its students superior education at all levels. Iredell Statesville Schools is one of two public districts serving area students from kindergarten through grade twelve. Experienced teachers, strong test scores, and high graduation rates earned it the Malcolm Baldridge National Quality Award in two thousand and eight. The Mooresville graded school district has also earned national recognition for its digital conversion initiative, which places smart board technology in each kindergarten through third-grade classroom, and provides each fourth through twelfth-grade student with a laptop computer. Both districts are among the best public schools in the state. Mitchell Community College in Statesville is a great option for affordable higher education that's close to home. In Race City, USA, students may attend Universal Technical Institute, where they'll receive technical education training in the automotive industry. NASCAR Technical Institute also in Mooresville trains students for entry-level NASCAR and automotive technician jobs. Join Iredell County students on the fast track to success.
There's another video in particular you're interested in?
Do the healthcare and probably the quality of life.
Okay.
Residents of Iredell County have peace of mind with access to quality healthcare facilities right on their doorsteps. Iredell Memorial Hospital has served the county and surrounding region for more than sixty-five years. Physicians of varying specialties provide comprehensive health services to patients, as well as state-of-the-art diagnostics. Centers of excellence include cardiovascular, cancer, surgical services, wellness and prevention, and women's and children's. IMH is the only hospital in the county with a diabetes program recognized by the American Diabetes Association. Davis Regional Medical Center in Statesville opened a new emergency department in late two thousand and nine. Fifteen thousand additional square feet and state-of-the-art technology facilitate increased volumes without sacrificing patient privacy, efficiency, and quality care. Lake Norman Regional Medical Center also strives to bring comprehensive healthcare services to Iredell County residents. The campus includes four medical office buildings, four specialty centers, and a one hundred seventeen-bed hospital. Trust your health to the knowledgeable physicians of Iredell County. Residents of Iredell County have plenty of resources within the region that make living here such a pleasure. Lake Norman State Park sits at the edge of the largest man-made lake in North Carolina, and provides plenty of year-round recreation for outdoor enthusiasts. The park's trails are perfect for hiking and biking, and campers are always welcome to spend the night. Arts and culture are fostered within the county with various galleries, theater groups, and outdoor events. Enjoy productions by children and adults, or a night at the symphony. Community pride is both felt and seen throughout the county. Residents support their neighbors, buying local goods at area farmers' markets, and providing quality programs for senior citizens. Close proximity to nearby metropolitan areas is ideal for the occasional day trip. However, with the superior quality of life that can be found in Iredell County, it's no wonder that many residents prefer sticking closer to home.
And those are a few examples of what is available on our website. And again, that was done at no cost to the county, and the way it was paid for was through advertising. And of course, the company is still trying to sell some more advertising, so hopefully they will, because we have this for two years, and then at the end of two years, unless they feel that it's going to be productive for them, it will not be renewed. But I think two years is the timeframe, isn't it, Tracy?
Right.
And we didn't do that, but you did see some advertising around some of the videos that we showed, and the way it's set up is that you can actually click on that, and that will take you to that company's website, or video, or whatever they may have available. And so, we just wanted you to be familiar with what...
Sorry about that.
Yeah. Do the schools up there, see what they got.
Send your child to a school with a tradition of excellence, acceptance, and experience. In Iredell Statesville Schools, our mission is to rigorously challenge all students to achieve their academic potential and lead productive and rewarding lives. With over twenty thousand students in thirty-six schools, Iredell Statesville Schools are among the twenty largest districts in North Carolina, as well as the top ten percent for performance. With two early colleges, two schools offering international baccalaureate curriculum, a technology magnet school for young children, and a comprehensive career academy for high schoolers, we offer exciting challenges for all types of learners. As a two thousand and eight recipient of the Malcolm Baldridge National Quality Award, we focus on partnerships, collaboration, and learning-focused programs in order to consistently achieve positive results. Most recently, we were named a recipient of one of only forty-nine coveted federal I-3 grants, worth approximately five million dollars. This money will help us ensure that all children receive the quality education they so deserve. With our rapidly changing global environment, we want to ensure success for our students now and into the future. In Iredell Statesville Schools, we provide an environment where students are actively engaged in the learning process. Exciting students about their own education is the greatest reward we can receive. Igniting a passion for learning, Iredell Statesville Schools.
Okay. Well, we won't take more of your time now, but if you want to go on our website, you can view it and the rest of it as well. And again, if you know anybody that wants to buy any ad on this, keep it on the air.
Could I just add one thing? In the three days that I went around the county with the videographer, having been here about ten years, it gave me an opportunity. You know, I don't often take part of the week to go all over the county, but it helped me to appreciate a little bit more what we actually do have here locally, because I think sometimes we forget it and we take it for granted. So, this is a good way to kind of go and refresh your memory on what's here, if you are a local. And it's also a good way to attract other businesses and let people from outside the county know what kind of great things we have in Iredell County. So, thanks.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And that's my report.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We have no closed session tonight, and at this point, I'm going to offer a motion that we continue this meeting to four p.m. on Tuesday the fifteenth for a brief reading from the county assessor's office regarding the evaluation. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.